I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. This is Tuesday, November 4th. For our regular meeting, can I, any input on our regular agenda as far as the lineup goes, any public input? If not, can I get a motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
Second, Otten.
All right. If there's no further discussion, Alicia, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaronson?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landy?
Yes. Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Any public input on our consent agenda this morning?
Madam Chair, I'm Linda Montgomery from Fairview, South Dakota. I would like the Agenda Item 6 pulled from the Consent Agenda onto the Regular Agenda.
Thank you. Is there any other public input on the Agenda for Consent lineup this morning? All right. Commissioners, you've heard a request from the public to remove Item 6 and put it on our Regular Agenda. Is there a motion to do that?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, and I've had several comments from the phone calls from the public about pulling Issue 6 as well. They'd like some more.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We've got a motion and a second. Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronson?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landy?
Yes. Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve our Consent Agenda as amended?
Otten?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronson?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landy?
Yes. Motion carries. First item on our regular business, we have a presentation from South Dakota Lincoln Rural Water. Somebody here from Lincoln Rural Water? Good morning.
Good morning.
If you just want to give us your names?
Yep, you bet. So, thank you for the opportunity to present this morning. My name is Steve Watson. I'm the managing partner of Teton Ridge Consulting, which is an economic development consulting firm that's based in Sioux Falls. And today, I'm also joined by John Sterns, who's the General Manager of South Lincoln Rural Water Systems, and the newly-formed Lincoln Regional Waste Water System, which we'll talk about here momentarily. I'm tag teaming the presentation with John. So as county commissioners, you understand fully the importance of essential public infrastructure to a functioning society. You hear a lot about roads. I suspect this commission hears a lot about roads. You hear a lot about water, electricity. I'm here to say that water, wastewater and stormwater systems are equally as important as those. And like other public infrastructure, it requires ongoing maintenance and investment to keep it fully operational. There's really three things that are driving wastewater improvements right now in the region and stormwater improvements. First and foremost is state and federal requirements for regulatory. And ammonia is something that has been talked about a lot. The state has put more stringent ammonia limits on wastewater systems. And a lot of our communities are prepared for that and are addressing that. But there's more coming down the pike. Phosphorus and total nitrogen are also coming, and we have to be prepared for that. I don't know if it's going to be in five years or 10 years, but it's coming. There's also been increased intensity of storm events. And I don't have any data with me here today to talk about the frequency of these storm events. But all of us in the county, and certainly here in Canton, can see with our own two eyes the impact of these different storm events. And as we continue to build our community and increase density, we're going to continue to see greater and greater impact from these storm events. And you all know that Lincoln County is one of the fastest-growing counties in the state. Our wastewater systems have to be ready for that growth. It's coming. So, bigger systems, better technology to address these regulatory requirements, more chemicals, more staff, more staff training, all of these things add up. There are significant costs that are hard to address for small communities in particular. So, John and I, and others, have been asking the question, how do we build resilience to overcome these different challenges in the future? So, economic resilience. How do we balance the growth in the county outside of just T and Harrisburg, leveraging that growth to pay for these improvements so it's not on the backs of the existing residents? Environmental and regulatory resilience. As I mentioned earlier, ammonia requirements are here. Our more stringent limits are coming down the pike. How do we prepare for that? And then third, operational resilience. How do we create systems that can still function despite a major storm event? So one community is not completely taken out. We can't mitigate all the risks, but we think there's a better way to address this going forward. Those questions are questions that leaders from both Canton and Worthing were asking themselves in 2022 when they commissioned a study to look at the prospect of creating a regional wastewater system in Lincoln County. I was part of that analysis, and we looked at where does it make sense to place a wastewater facility? Where does it make sense to discharge that wastewater? What would it cost to build such a system? What are some of the environmental hurdles that would come with something like that? There was a lot of really good information that came from that study. And then earlier this year, the communities of Lenox and Beersford got on board, in addition to some other funding partners, including the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance, Excel Energy and South Lincoln Rural Water Systems, to take a deeper dive. What if we expanded the system to also include Lenox and Beersford? How do we align this prospective system with the Lincoln County 2050 Comp Plan so that we're facilitating strategic growth where it makes sense? And what is this all going to cost? And where does it make sense to build this facility? And how do we pay for it? And so, I'm going to turn over to John Sterns to go through some of the key highlights from that 2025 analysis.
Thank you for the opportunity. So, we worked in partnership with an engineering firm to take a look at the needs of the communities that Steve has identified. And Steve and Miriam with the engineering firm met with each community, assessed their needs both now and into the future. And what came from that was a 3.1 million gallon per day mechanical wastewater treatment facility that would be best cited here in Canton. Now, the 3.1 NGD is something that can be added on to and expanded with relative ease, and it has a million gallons of reserve capacity to allow the communities to grow in ways that they see fit. Canton was identified as a preferred location, given its proximity to the Big Sioux River and the need for an adequate discharge location. And Canton's need for being part of the original study makes sense to cite the treatment facility here. The project scope also addresses the rural service areas identified as the 2050 Plan. Those are shown on the map in red. And it allows for growth not only as communities see fit, but as the county sees fit. It is designed to be constructed in phases, and those phases are all up in the air based on how the communities' needs progress. So, Phase 1 would include a treatment facility and some kind of conveyance, but we don't entirely know where that conveyance would go. And that would be, you know, if Worthing needed as part of Phase 1, we would build to Worthing. The timeline for construction is unknown at this point. Right now, our main objective is to secure funding and gain support for this kind of a project. So, what are some of the costs and some of the benefits? Engineering firm came up with a top-line cost of $108 million for the full build-out of the project. Now, that number is without a doubt expensive. And so, from there, Steve and I have worked towards trying to find the proper funding sources to make this a more feasible option. Okay, the primary benefits we see by regionalizing is to consolidate and add some operational efficiency by bringing everything together into one location. A mechanical treatment plant also allows better response to environmental and regulation requirements, and it allows for efficiencies of staffing and those sort of things. A mechanical treatment plant is one that uses processes that are not lagoon-based. So there are still lagoons as far as equalization goes and that kind of thing, but the lagoons are not the primary treatment mechanism. And because of that, the expansion is much easier and the operation is more, you know, it's more consistent. So, the reserve capacity that we have built in also allows for quick response in the need of sudden growth or accelerated growth. Expansion is easy if we have a mechanical plant here in town. With that, I'll turn it back over to Steve.
So, as John mentioned, $108 million is a very big price tag, and frankly, it's not really within reach of our communities at that level. But through our research, we identified a very unique opportunity to secure funding for both project planning and ultimately build-out of the system. And it's through the EDA, the Economic Development Administration, which is a federal agency. In August of '24, there was a presidential declaration due to major storm events here in Canton. You're all very aware of those storms in 2024. Lincoln County was part of that declaration. Canton was hit pretty hard. There's three different funding pathways. There's a readiness path where there's dollars available for project planning. There's an implementation path that is kind of for medium-sized projects that include both planning and construction dollars. And then there's this industry transformation pathway that can provide up to $50 million towards project costs. And so, it's our intent to pursue this funding opportunity. We would like to pursue the readiness path initially that will allow us to do some additional project planning. We can understand the costs more holistically. We can look at project phasing. It also includes a rate study because residents in all of these communities need to understand what's the actual cost going to be to us. And so, that analysis is going to be very important to that. Once we complete that, assuming of course we get the funding, then we would go forward with the full application for this transformational pathway and the $50 million. These are competitive grants. Just because we were part of this presidential declaration does not guarantee that we're going to get the funds. We feel very confident that we can articulate the need. You can see those pictures. You're familiar with some of the impacts from the last flooding event here in Canton. We think we can articulate the impact very well. We're well on our way with the feasibility with the two studies that we've already completed. We think we have a good strategy. We've thought about how we would structure this. Where we could use some additional horsepower is building that coalition strength. So, we've received letters of support from Canton, Worthing, Lenox and Beersford. Because this is nationally competitive grant, we feel strongly that it would be helpful to have both the county and the state on board with our coalition. We're not making any type of funding request of the county. We're simply saying, would you consider providing a letter of support saying, we want to be part of this coalition, and we support your endeavor to pursue this unique federal grant opportunity? Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
On a grant, what are you looking at as far as trying to get a grant for the complete thing?
Yes, sir. Yep. We want to pursue a planning grant that's probably going to be around $200, $250,000. And then we are going to pursue everything that may be available to us.
Who did, who did the feasibility studies, or how did those get paid for already? Was that grant funding?
Correct. Yep. The communities came together and helped fund those studies. And then some of the other economic development entities that I mentioned earlier, Sioux Metro Growth Alliance, as well as Excel Energy contributed in addition to South Lincoln Rural Water.
Thank you. Other questions?
Steve, when this is, this has tremendous economic development potential. Because if you're putting those lines in, obviously, those lines can be tapped into by any number of commercial or network. Does this grant have any ability to apply to a ready fund from the Governor's Office of Economic Development?
That's a great question. We should look into that.
Because, you know, what, basically, that fund is meant for economic development, job growth mainly. And I was taking notes here. You check a lot of boxes here. So, but it all starts with being able to have that plan put in place so that you have something to follow. So.
Yes, sir.
I certainly don't have. I'd highly recommend that we do that. We send a letter off of encouragement and support.
Any other questions? All right. If not, is there any public input on the presentation? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing none, I would consider a motion.
So moved. Madam Chair?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair. So, I want to thank Steve for coming into my office. I had a chance to meet with him. I think he may have met with the other commissioners as well, if I'm not mistaken. Appreciate it. There was a lot of frank, candid conversation about some of the concerns, but also, and the challenges, but also of opportunities this presents. The one thing I want to say is that I believe regionalization and consolidations of these big types of infrastructure projects is the way of the future in South Dakota. And it's not a choice. I think we're forced into this by several things. First of all, it's just the cost of infrastructure is just way too expensive to tackle in a system that is primarily funded by property taxes and then some city local sales tax. I get it. This kind of system, if it were implemented and developed, it will probably become some kind of enterprise fund that will fund itself. Clearly, I'm going to support this, but clearly, one of the concerns that I think regular participants in the system are going to have is, what will this do to my water bill? You know? So hopefully, this study is going to tell us, how much am I as a regular homeowner or renter, am I going to pay more, less or the same? And so hopefully, we can help identify that because the biggest economic development challenge, obviously, is what it does to a regular taxpayer's pocketbook. But I just want to say this lastly. We have excellent examples right here in the Sioux Falls metro area of regionalization and consolidation. We've got Lewis &amp; Clark, which has been a phenomenal system. We have the Rural Water Systems. We've got the REA. We've got the Minnehaha Lincoln County Jail. We've got the Minnehaha Lincoln County Human Services. And so clearly, these kinds of systems are moving towards multi-county. We've got to move beyond just the borders of our own county because unfortunately, these projects are just way too expensive to, and so we've got to increase the number of bill payers in the system. So for those reasons, I'm going to support this. And thank you for coming in and spearheading this.
Any further discussion? Those are interesting comments, Commissioner Aaronson, since you did not support giving funds to the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance in a very small amount that we support them with. So, I really appreciate the work and the efforts that have went into this, despite the county not providing any funding for Sioux Metro Growth Alliance next year. Alicia, will you call a question?
Commissioner Aaronson?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landy?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you for coming in. Next item on our agenda is employee health benefits. Carrie, you got that?
Well, I have a guest. All right. Yes. So, I'm going to turn it over to Scott Johnson from Brown &amp; Brown, who's going to present our package for 2026.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for having me. My name is Scott Johnson. I work for Brown &amp; Brown. We're the employee benefits broker that works with Lincoln County to help design and maintain the employee benefits for your employees. So, as with past years, we're going to look at the current plan year, the utilization year-to-date, and then we'll recap the 2026 renewal process and what the renewals look like for the upcoming plan year. All right. Already kind of talked about the agenda for this presentation here, so we'll get right into it. This is just the plan summary so far, year-to-date. So, this is, you know, claims through August of 2025. In the blue portion here, you can see that the loss ratio is about 93.1%. And that's just basically saying the medical claims that Health Partners has paid on behalf of your employees and their dependents compared to the premiums that have been paid to them. So, running better than, lower than the 100% premiums that have been paid. You can see the last, in 2024, at this time of year, it was 107.2%. And the year ended pretty favorably, actually coming down from that mark at about 101%. And you can see where 2023 and 2022 ended as well. So, the plan is running pretty favorably year-to-date through August. Here, looking at the enrollment, in the lower right-hand corner, you can kind of see the percent change in contracts. So, that's employees that are on the plan. It's up about 5.8%. Right now, there are 107 employees on the, on the plan. Little bit of an uptick from where last year ended, but you can see there was quite a bit of increase in enrollment throughout the 2024 plan year. All right. Looking at the claims here, again, in the lower right-hand corner, you can see the change in claims per employee per month. It's about 4.6% down, lower than last year on a per-employee-per-month basis, which is great to see. What I thought was interesting is, you know, even with the increase in enrollment this year, the average monthly claims are about $165,000, and that is lower than the net claims from last year with a smaller population. So, great, great to see those, those claims numbers. All right. We have the rolling 12 average here, and this is just looking at net paid claims, and that's that month plus the previous 11 months' average. So, in August of 2025, the net paid claims were about $262,000. That brought that rolling 12 average up to $159,000, and that is actually a decrease of 9.3% over the last 12 months. So, that is, that is great. You know, this is kind of showing what Lincoln County's trend actually is. On a per-employee-per-month basis, that decrease looks even larger because you have more employees on the plan. So, it's more heads to divide it by, but the decrease is down about 17.4%. So, great trend for Lincoln County. Based on the size of Lincoln County, Health Partners can't just look at your claim or your experience and give you a renewal just based on that. They have to blend it with the community and book of business to a certain extent there. And we'll see what kind of renewal they have provided in the upcoming slides here. Okay. The high claimants list here is showing all claimants that are over $25,000 in claims incurred. You can see over in the amount over the pooling, so that's anybody that's over $50,000 in claims. There are nine individuals there for a total of about $303,000. So, this is looking at claimants, claims that have been incurred from the beginning of 2024 through the first half of 2025, and paid in 2024 and in the first seven months of 2025 All right. And lastly, on the reporting portion here, we're looking at the funding summary. And what this is showing is the contributions or the fully insured premiums that Lincoln County pays to Health Partners. Towards the bottom here, when we look at the total expenses or those premiums that have been paid year-to-date, about $1.4 million. And we take out the employee portion of those contributions, about $352,000. That leaves the net employer cost at a little over $1 million. It's about $1,274 per employee per month, and that's an increase of 3.46% over the last plan year. So, that's great. You know, trend in the industry right now or in medical and pharmacy is in that 8, 9, 10% just inflation. You guys are well below that. And what's interesting is you can see the 4.02% increase last year over the prior year, 3.9% increase in 2023. So, it's really indicative of the, you know, the good plan years you guys have been having and the positive renewals that Health Partners has been passing along. All right. Moving into the renewal portion here, you can see on this list is just what carriers you have for each line of coverage. So, again, you have Health Partners for the medical and RX. You have TASK for your health savings account and Flex Spending Accounts. Delta Dental of South Dakota for dental. All of those were up for renewal this year. Vision with IMED is actually under a rate lock until 1-1 of 2028. Life and Disability with Symmetra, that one was under a rate lock until 2027. And then the voluntary STD is up for renewal this year. However, we did get a rate pass on that one until 1-1-27, which we'll look at in a little bit. And then you have CompSCYCT for your employee assistance program. All right. So, this is just a look, kind of a brief look at the plan designs that you have. You have two, two plans, a co-pay plan and a high deductible health plan. In the upper right-hand corner, you can kind of see the deductibles for each plan and the out-of-pocket maximums. And you'll see one portion in red there. And what that is, it's just showing that the high deductible health plan is increasing in deductible from $3,300 for a single to $3,400 for a single, and then from $6,600 for a family to $6,800. And the reason that increase is happening is because currently, the deductibles are what we call embedded. So, that's single deductible. If you're on a family contract and you're, you know, you have $3,300 in claims on a family contract, then you're capped out at that current deductible. You don't have to meet the full $6,600. That's called, that's what an embedded deductible is. If we weren't to increase up to these $3,400 and $6,800 deductibles, then it would, it would become a non-embedded deductible where one person on a family contract might have to meet that full family deductible of $6,600. So, it's a benefit to have it be embedded, and these are pretty, pretty small increases. But again, it's IRS mandated to keep those embedded deductibles. All right. Looking at the plan competitiveness, just a little bit of benchmarking here so that you can see that your plans are ranked as market-competitive. If you look at the little, we call it kind of a strike zone in a way, the PPO plan is right down, a perfect strike, right down the middle. That means that the plan design is right where you want it to be, and the employee contributions are in a great spot as well. The HDHP, the High Deductible Health Plan, the plan design is down a little bit, but still within that gray shaded area where we want to be. And that's mainly because the deductible is a little, is a little higher, but that's, that's the type of plan it is. All right? The employee contributions are still right where you want it to be as well. So, market-competitive on the plan design. Each year, health insurance carriers can make mandatory changes to their fully insured plan designs, or they can make suggestions on things or give you optional changes that you can decide yes or no to. This year, Health Partners offered four of these things. You can see three here and then one on the next slide. The first one is a mandatory change. And what that's dealing with is the non-emergency services rendered outside of the United States. So, the current benefit for your plan is that the plan covers non-emergency services outside of the United States. The new benefit that it will go The new benefit that it will go into effect, 1-1 of 2026, is that the plan will not cover non-emergency services rendered outside the United States. So that's one of those ones that's just mandatory. Okay, the next few are ones that we've looked at, we've talked with Carrie about, and others and decided for the next three, we're just going to keep the plan designs as is. But for the second one here, the specialty drug injections and infusions administered by a healthcare provider in the member's home. So the current benefit is that that just follows the benefit for IV therapy in a member's home, and we're just going to keep it that way. Okay, the new benefit is talking about a different way to have it follow more of the other injections other than routine and immunizations. We're just going to keep the plan as is. Okay, on the bottom one, the specialty drugs filled at a network pharmacy. Right now, the benefit for specialty drug varies by plan. Currently, it's just co-pays for the different, for the different tiers of those specialty drugs. The new benefit was going to be splitting those specialty drugs into two categories and having a co-insurance associated with them. Now, we did look at this, you know, we didn't, we didn't market the medical plan this year. There's a pretty favorable renewal that came in. But what we did look at is this in particular, we looked at changing the specialty drug benefit from just co-pays only for the different tiers to a 20% capped at $200. We decided not to do that because there really wasn't much of a savings in premium. It was less than 1% savings, and it would have put some burden on the handful of individuals that do use these specialty drugs. All right, the last one was just a standard travel benefit inside the network. Currently, the optional standard travel benefit can reimburse certain travel expenses related to transplants. We're just going to leave that at as-is and not go with the new benefit recommendation. Okay, get into the numbers portion of the renewal here. So at the top portion of the screen, you can see the enrollment by plan and by coverage tier, single, spouse, child, and family. You have 105 members on the, on the plan as of the time that we were running this renewal. In the middle portion, you can see the rates per coverage tier for each of the plans right now in 2025. And then at the very bottom, you can see the rates for the upcoming plan year. In the lower right-hand corner, you can see that that overall increase is about 6.95%. Different, differing increases by plan, where we can show you how that'll look for the employees on the next slide here. So with that 6.95% overall increase, the co-pay plan, the people on the traditional co-pay plan, will be going up about 6.83%. And what that looks like is an employee on single coverage on that co-pay plan is paying $213 per month right now, will be paying $228 per month next year. That's an increase of $14.60 per month. So a single on that plan would go up $14.60 per month, and then all the way up to a family, that would increase about $51 per month on the co-pay plan. On the high deductible health plan, this one is getting an 8.12% increase, and that would be an increase for single-tier coverage of about $13.58 per month, and then $48.10 for a family. And again, that 6.95% is a below-trend increase, which is really a positive thing. We're seeing a lot of increases that we're having to deliver to other clients in the 30, 40% range, and then we have to get creative with some of those things. So a single-digit increase is something to be pretty happy with. All right, dental. So here, we're looking at the dental, at the dental renewal. Basically, at the top portion of the slide here, you can see what the current rates are for coverage, per coverage tier. And then in the second part, in the light green, it says experience rated, and then it provides some rates there. So that is basically Delta Dental of South Dakota saying, if we had rated you just on your experience at Lincoln County, we would project, we'd be asking for about an 18% increase. However, what's awesome about Delta Dental of South Dakota is that they have this rate stability program, so people that have been long-term customers with them get a rate cap. So they're going with about a 4.7% increase for dental contributions this year. In the lower, on the left-hand side, you can see kind of the plan design. It does show as below-market, but that really is only affected by the fact that it's 100% voluntary plan, meaning it's, you know, the employees pay 100% of the premium there. That's the only thing that's dropping this down to below-market. The plan design itself is adequate. And then as far as when you're comparing to other employers, about 27% of employer groups out there don't offer a contribution, so similar to Lincoln County. So again, a 4.71% increase for the dental for 2026. And what that looks like dollars-wise is for a single, that's going up about $2.30 per month, and for a family, about $7.10 per month. All right, vision. So vision is with IMED. This year is going to be, or 2026 will be the second year of a four-year rate lock or rate guarantee, so no changes in the vision contributions. There we go. You can kind of see that this single contribution will stay at $7.68 per month, family at $22.56 per month. And then lastly, the ancillary lines, so the base life, AD&amp;D insurance that the county pays for, and then the voluntary lines that I'll get to at the bottom here. But this is under a rate lock through 2026, so that just means that the rates per $1,000 of coverage aren't changing for these two lines. However, you know, the monthly payments could change based on volume, growth of, you know, people coming onto the plan and so forth, but the rates themselves are staying the same. Again, that base life and AD&amp;D benefit is $15,000. And then when we're looking at the voluntary short-term disability, we did negotiate a one-year rate lock. Current rates are good through 2026, and then they will, everything will be up for renewal in 2027. Voluntary base life and AD&amp;D, again, rates are locked through 2026. You can see the number of employees that are in each of these voluntary coverages. It looks like you have, like in voluntary accident, you have 40 employees on that benefit. Voluntary critical illness, 23 employees. So a good number of people are picking up these voluntary benefits. All right, and then this is my last slide, but this is just looking at your whole employee benefits portfolio, all of the benefits, and you guys are smack dab right in the middle at that market competitive. So your medical plan designs are right where you want them to be. The other benefits are right where you want them to be as well. So thank you for your time. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Sir, just so I understand that correctly, what's the overall, you know, dollar increase to the county for this year then? Just to clarify that?
If I can go back a few slides, I don't know if that's under my control or not. There we go. Let's see if we can go back to like the, the medical portion is kind of the largest piece. So if we can go back a few more slides, just be right here. There you go. Thank you. This one is showing that it is a $112,000 overall increase. That's what that 6.95% represents. Thank you, I should have called that out earlier. As for the, actually, that $112,000 is the employer portion, so the county's portion. The employee portion is 36,000, almost $37,000 increase, so the overall 6.95% increase is just under $150,000.
And that is competitive or with other plans?
Yes, absolutely. I would say it's, you know, better than competitive from what I'm seeing out there right now.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Just to make sure, when you say competitive with other plans, are we competitive, Carrie, with like our next-door neighbor of Minnehaha County and who we are continually battling for employees and things?
Yeah, so that's a question we get quite a bit. We have to look at the total compensation package, right? So it's not just about how much we pay versus what they pay. We are right in line. As a matter of fact, some think that compared to Minnehaha, in some ways, we're better compared to other counties where the county themselves pay a little bit more, but then their compensation is different. So it's a whole package that we have to look at.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, have any other questions?
I don't have any questions, but I think this is awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public input on this agenda item? If not, can I get a motion, please?
Beth Quayle from Harrisburg. I'm not saying that I even know what I'm talking about here, but in my, you know, when I have my insurance come due or whatever, I generally look to see if there's other companies that would have a better program for me, would have a different cost, would have different benefits for me. So I don't know if that's something that you would do ever, but I'm just saying maybe there's something else to compare it with. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input this morning on this agenda item? All right, sir, did you want to address that comment?
Sure, yes. You know, this, that is something that we do on behalf of Lincoln County from time to time. Not every year do we go out and market the plans. A lot of times, we do that when we see a relatively unfavorable renewal come through and we need to put a little bit of market pressure on the incumbent carrier. We did not experience that this year with a single-digit below-trend renewal, so we did not market it this year. We did look at, like I said, some different plan design changes to those specialty RX drugs, but it cannot, the benefits outweighed the costs, so.
All right, thank you for that. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second, Otten.
Got a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? I'm going to ask that we keep discussion as brief as possible so that we can get through our agenda this morning. If there is no further discussion, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, and then we have, thank you for coming in today. We've got Terry for our next agenda. Oh, I see him out in the hallway. All right, Terry.
Morning. Terry Flight, Lincoln County, the Highway Department. Here today, for you to consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign a resolution to modify the county highway system. Again, this is about two miles of road. Back in 2021, the city of T, we came to an agreement with the city of T, and they were taking over two miles of road around their municipality up there. This is just the, the resolution that the DOT, the state DOT, will need to remove these roads from our system. So it's kind of a formality. Yeah, it's four years later, almost five years later, but at least we finally got it. So cleaning up the highway, cleaning up the, our highway system, getting these off of our system finally, so.
All right, anybody have any questions for Terry? All right, is there any public input on this agenda item? Okay, thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Was there a second?
Second, Otten.
Got a motion from Commissioner Aaron's and a second from Commissioner Otten to approve the resolution. Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, that motion carries. Next item on our agenda is board discussion of possible action and a motion to establish a committee regarding emergency medical service districts. Commissioner Schmidt, you want to tee that up?
This was brought to our attention. There was an article that appeared in the Lenox Independent. Nate is here, by the way. Nate, congratulations on your very thorough letter to the editor explaining the reaction that the citizens of Lenox had for many years. They have had to, the city has subsidized the area, the ambulance area that Lenox covers, and I think it's to the tune of about 120-some thousand dollars or something like that. So after all these many years, the citizens of Lenox and their city council decided that they could no longer support that. So they sent out a notice that after a certain date, they were going to discontinue ambulance service beyond city limits. This certainly facilitated a lot of calls on the part of individuals and concerns and given the, given the situation that there was a meeting prior to this several years ago, trying to address the situation, which met with a lot of objections. So I'm just telling you that, and this is a full disclosure, and I apologize, Betty, I know this is your area and I should have contacted you and the chair. However, I got a call from Commissioner Aaron's, and we discussed this matter, and tongue-in-cheek, I say this publicly, this is one of the first times that Commissioner Aaron's and I have ever agreed on anything. So I thought, ooh, we set precedent here. So I thought it may be a good idea, as he has suggested as well, that we have a discussion for the commission. I don't know that I'm right now taking any action, but I do think we should have some kind of discussion, and Nate is here to explain. So for the public and for the commission, we can kind of have a lot of input, and then if there is a decision later on for the commission to take some deliberate action, it may be appropriate. So that's my, and my other comment is this. When I look at this situation, and I'll let Commissioner Aaron's, you certainly have your opinion, when I look at this situation, and everybody will view this, if you put a district in, you're going to have a tax on your property at some point in time. Well, I view it as this way, you know, if I'm sitting in the country and I have to make a phone call and I don't have any ambulance service, what's my alternative? And if you know anything about emergency rooms today, you can't be driving up in a pickup and hauling them out of the track, out of the bed anymore. They don't want that. They want to have an EMT that gives a report. So I look at, I look at this as another insurance situation, and I do believe that everybody that served in that area, I want to publicly say that, should pay their fair share. I don't think that any city should have to subsidize. So that's my editorial comment. Commissioner Aaron's?
Commissioner Schmidt, thank you. So, yeah, it may surprise people, but me and Commissioner Schmidt do agree upon things from time to time. And one of those things is getting our arms around some of these public safety issues. And it's especially important in a state where, or in a county where these things are funded by property taxes, and this would contemplates the creation of a new taxing district. And I appreciate the people of Lenox and Mr. Vander Plaatsch in particular for generating this conversation. I think Lenox is in a difficult position because the people who live in town are subsidizing the ambulance service for the people in the country who the ambulance serves. And the city of Lenox does that because they want to help people out. They want to make sure that they have a good quality of life. There is a, there is a deficit that the city of Lenox is running, though, 125-plus thousand dollars a year. And so they're bringing this to the forefront, and they want to create a taxation district for an ambulance. The creation of a taxation district, though, necessarily creates some included properties or areas and excluded properties. And we took a look at the map, that was the first stab. I take it it's just a conversation starter, I hope, from the city of Lenox. But their proposed taxation district goes all the way into the subdivision authority of the city of T, and I know that T is in the middle of doing an ambulance study, and they have some equities here as well. And then this proposed district comes into the, pretty close to the subdivision authority of Harrisburg as well. And then, so whenever you draw a new taxation district, those other communities, especially on an issue as important as EMS service, obviously are going to want to have a seat at the table. Now, my understanding is Lenox has taken out some petitions, and they may or may not get the signatures, and then that would put in front of this county commission the choice of whether to approve, reject, or modify. Well, I think we ought to be proactive in terms of getting our arms around this and de-conflict any potential issues ahead of time. de-conflict any potential issues ahead of time, especially when you're creating a new tax on people. And we need to balance public safety with fiscal responsibility, and that's what we're trying to do here. So I urge the commission today, I'd like to do three things. I'd like to get all the stakeholders in Lincoln County at the table. I want to get them, as well as the commissioners, educated on how ambulance taxation district works. I want to better understand the financial controls that ambulance service use in order to pay for the service. You know, there's Medicaid, Medicare caps, and then there's people with private insurance and private pay and all that. And that has to subsidize people who either can't pay or don't pay for the service. And it's complicated. It's healthcare. So we want to get our arms around that, because obviously we want to make sure that before the taxpayers put a dime into the system, that the actual patient and their insurance are paying for the service first. And then the third thing, obviously, is we want to look at those boundary lines as well, to make sure that if there is a service in T, they've got a car, they've got an area carved out for them. If Harrisburg is going to be doing something, they've got an area carved out for them. And then also, the other thing we need to look at is the possibility of regionalization of the service as well, because there is, there may be, maybe, excess capacity from the private ambulance service that services Sioux Falls that may be able to come further south in order to serve patients as well. And so before we create a new taxation district, we obviously want answers to all those questions. And I think the best way to do that is we form a committee, and then the committee meets, and we get answers to these questions. And so I appreciate your support for that. Thank you.
Commissioner, I feel some responsibility that you have not had the ability, or you haven't been contacted, or Commissioner Putnam as well. So that, would you entertain a couple of weeks' delay so that you're able to put your input and your spin on this to react to what Commissioner Aaronz has said, or maybe modify or something? I'd like a reaction from the both of you.
I would vote to, or I would make a motion to table this, because this was just dropped on the agenda with no information. And I remember the discussion a couple of years ago, and I, I'm speechless, actually, that we didn't know about this ahead of time.
Well, frankly, I agree with Commissioner Otten. This is on our agenda, and that's fine. And I know that the county does play some role in this process, but I'm interested in hearing on what other efforts have already taken place, you know, by the residents or even by these municipalities that are, you know, not able to fund their ambulance service. So I'm interested. I don't know why this is getting pushed on the county right now in advance of a petition or otherwise. So this is a little premature for me, and I guess I'd like to look into it a little bit before we do something like this. And I have not had the opportunity to do that.
Well, I think it's a good start, but I think we need to, it's going to take a lot more down the road to get this deal going and look at it. So whatever, tabling, it's fine.
If we're going to table, then I don't know that we should go into much discussion since there's not really anything here to do if we're not going to do anything. So is there a consensus? I mean, what are your thoughts?
Well, is there a way to get a group together, like Mr. Aaron said, to start the process as opposed to doing any more today?
Well, I'd like to look into it and try and figure out, I mean, what is this group going to consist of? I'm just not sure. There's no petition filed, so I feel like this is premature.
Well, you got to start somewhere. The, you know, Lincoln County's pretty big, and you got the southern part, you, you know, so this little ambulance thing could amount to be the pretty wide and deep thing.
Well, it might be, but it's also a tax increase.
Very much so.
Well, but to be talked about.
So until I have more from the people that are asking for this, and to see if the people even want this, I don't know the point in putting together a committee right now.
My view on that is that the intent of the committee is not to generate support for a taxation district. I'm probably the most anti-tax person up here. So to, and the audience is laughing, so they recognize that. The intent of this is to get educated and to bring stakeholders to the table so that we can create a manageable process. So that way, if those petitions, and I think the petitions are going to go out, and they probably will get enough signatures, and I'm okay waiting for the petition process to play out, if we need to put a little bit of a pause on it for that. But overall, in terms of being progressive and getting our arms around an issue, so as important as EMS service, it just goes to educate the commission and the public better. That's all it is. It's not creating a taxation district. In fact, perhaps one of the proposed courses of action that could come out of any kind of study committee is not forming a taxation committee or creating more stronger financial internal controls for these ambulance services. So those are just all things that we would discuss. I certainly am not in favor of raising anybody's taxes right now, but I do want to get better educated on an important issue.
Thank you.
You know, Madam Chair, in order to be fair, and to Commissioner Otten, I would say that we wait until they have the petitions, whatever's necessary signed. I do think, I do support Joel, what you want to do. I told you that. I think that's part of the responsibility of this commission is to provide information and to vet every opportunity that may exist as far as serving the public. But I am, I am content to delay this for a week or two or three, and give Commissioner Otten the ability to buy in and put in her two cents and do her checking, and in fairness to her. So I don't know if that, Madam Chair, if that means that we table this for a month or whatever. What's the process? Would you prefer?
I guess I would just like a little more time to think about it. There haven't been any discussions about who these stakeholders might be, how they're going to be chosen. I mean, this is all coming without any notice to Commissioner Otten and I, and it is Commissioner Otten's district. So I think.
So we don't have to take any, we shouldn't, we won't just take any action today. We've had a brief discussion, and we'll put this back on the calendar prior or after. Nate, what's the timeline for signatures?
Good morning, Commissioners Nate Vander Plaatsch, City of Lenox. At this point, no signatures have been, we have not started the signature process, the gathering process. We're going through the process of putting the petition together, making sure that that's vetted correctly before we go, though, throughout getting signatures.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Aaronz, are you opposed if we put this and delayed this for a month?
No, I'm okay with that. I would like to hear some public input, though, today.
Yeah, we're going to get public input, but a month would be adequate. So do you want the public input after a motion or?
Well, my, if we're going to table something, we're not going to take in public input right now, because we're going to take public input at a later time. Counsel, any thoughts?
According to our public comment policy.
What's that?
According to our public comment policy, allow public comment.
Go ahead. Okay, will do. All right, any public input on this? And I'm going to keep it to whether we should table this or not, is, that's the motion that we're talking about right now.
Linda Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. I totally support getting a committee together to discuss this. I know that this agenda came out on Friday, and I've been trying to find the answers to many things on this agenda since Friday. So I don't think that I can really sit here and believe that people haven't been informed, that you haven't been informed. Also, what it taken is a call to the two that presented this and put it on the agenda. I believe that a committee is something, especially a citizens committee and with the commissioner, is what we are all about. What is the best thing to do for Lincoln County? Thank you.
Any additional public input?
Good morning, Amanda Mack, City of Harrisburg. I would just comment that the city of Harrisburg would welcome an opportunity to participate in a discussion regarding EMS services, regionalization. As you all know, we contract with you for police services, we volunteer fire and ambulance, and it is a complicated mess of things to try and figure out. And so the sooner we can start engaging in discussions, I think the better it will be for all of us, and particularly for the city of Lenox, as they try to move forward with their financial decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public input this morning?
Hello, Justin Wyland, City Administrator, City of T. Thanks, Commission, for having the opportunity to speak to you today. I believe Commissioner Schmidt, Commissioner Aaronz have made several of the points that I was planning to make. It is a complicated matter. The city of T understands the situation the city of Lenox is facing, sympathetic to that. The city of T also relies on the city of Lenox's ambulance service to, as a backup service when PCMS is not able to respond to residents' needs in T. So we already have a relationship there. I would say, however, that we do have kind of concerns, Commissioner Aaronz brought it up, that overlay this district into our growth area. So that's something that we would obviously like to have further conversations with Lenox and the commission about. It was mentioned by Commissioner Aaronz as well, the city of T is in the midst of an EMS study. We've hired a professional consultant. We should have that study in our hands, hopefully in the next month or two, and that's going to provide some answers. So it's difficult for us to provide insight into the situation until we have that study at hand. We are facing a conundrum and a future for EMS in our community, and we're looking to the study to answer some questions for us about how we're going to move forward. So I guess two asks would be to be part of the conversation moving forward, and the second ask would be to just kind of analyze that map of the district that Lenox has proposed at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I've got a question to ask you. Who is, I see an ambulance is going to T all the time. What's the company that does that?
That's PCMS, which is a private ambulance service that services the city of Sioux Falls. The city of Sioux Falls has a contract with PCMS. The city of T, the city of Harrisburg is both served by PCMS, but we do not have any type of contract with them. So they are just serving us because it helps their numbers, basically.
Is that something you're looking at, maybe talking to them about a contract?
The study that we've engaged with Fission Associates is supposed to provide us with some direction on how to move forward. You know, we've been, it works, but, and it's free, but it's, we do not necessarily get the response times in our community that our residents desire and expect at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other public input on this agenda item? Good morning, Chad.
Chad Skiles from HHS. I'm sure that all of you would have been more surprised if I hadn't gotten up to do this topic than the fact that I am standing before you. For all of you that know me, you know that I live, eat, breathe emergency medical services. It's been my passion for 40 years. And I 100% support the idea of forming this committee, made up of stakeholders involved, along with just citizens from the county who may not have a lot of knowledge of EMS, but as a potential user of it. We're all a potential user of EMS. It's one of those services that you hope you never have to use, but by golly, when you need it and you call 911, you want an ambulance to arrive. So I support wholly the concept and the idea of a committee. The state legislature just finished up, they authorized an EMS summer study this past summer that was made up of legislators. I listened to, they had three meetings. I listened to all 18 hours of those meetings with a lot of good information. But I like, and I embrace the idea of bringing that down to a county level. We have a very unique situation in Lincoln County when it comes to EMS and how it's provided. And I think we just need to really do a hard look at and educating everybody, from the decision-makers all the way down to the potential users of EMS. And I think the way to do that is by forming a committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public input?
Beth Coyle from Harrisburg. I would just like to echo Linda. Obviously, all these people that are here testifying knew that this was going to be on the agenda. The agenda comes out. I knew what was going to be on the agenda, and for somebody on the board to say they had no idea about this, it seems like that's a problem there. So I support this, too. You've got to start somewhere on an issue that is obviously affecting a lot of people. So I say to get going on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public input this morning? All right.
Madam Chair, I have a motion.
Yep, go ahead.
I think it's general consensus that the idea of forming a committee to evaluate, we haven't decided on what size, we haven't decided. So I will offer a motion to table this, saying for one month, giving Commissioner Otten and Commissioner Putnam any input beyond Commissioner Aaronz and myself, and come up with a committee structure that reflects this. I think that we have to keep in mind that there's a lot of players in here. So to get a well-rounded and a group together, seems like one month is, would be a good idea. So I would table this for one month. It sounds like T, if they get theirs together, we could get a lot of information right there.
And I'll make a substitute motion, ma'am, Madam Chair, to make it two months to accommodate the T study.
I have no problem with that. I'll be happy to entertain your motion, Commissioner Otten. And in fact, I'll second it.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Otten and a second from Commissioner Schmidt. Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a lighting upgrade. John, just, I have in my packet the lighting upgrade deal that you want me to, you want us to approve. It's marked as a draft, though. Do you have a final?
Once it will be approved, I can return the file.
Okay, I just noticed that. All right.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Rambo, Building Superintendent. Apologize, first of all, I'm losing my voice. Kind of got a little sore throat coming on here. So, so what we're at with this is a project we've been talking about actually for about two years now. And it's about replacing these fluorescent lighting to LED lighting. We have a grant that was presented to us for $75,000, roughly thereabouts, to do the project. And so what I opted to do is do all of the lighting in this part of the building, nothing in the old courthouse. And in my budget, I, or you authorized $190,000 to do it. And in my budget, I authorized $190,000 to do it. Again, of that, $75,000 will be covered by a grant, and the hope is that Xcel Energy will also give us some more funding. I have no idea what number that would be. It was talked about once, that it would be close to like $15,000. They just wrapped up their program for '25, so they haven't kicked out the new program for '26 here. But anyway, when it comes down to it, that, I think I talked, the last time I discussed it, that light fixture right there, the ballast is out. And that ballast, right now, would cost me about the same amount as a fixture, because the way the world's going is they're trying to get rid of fluorescents, and they want to go to LEDs, so they're going to price out fluorescents out of the market. So that's kind of where we're at, and I think it's a good deal. I think we got very good bids. They're very competitive. I was really, really surprised, because our bottom two bids were like, what, $650 apart? So in my opinion, I think we should bid the whole project to Electric Construction Company for the $160,000 and, or $160,182.
Thank you, John. Anybody have questions for John? All right, any public input?
John, that would be $160. We have 75 to offset that already, right?
Correct.
And there's a potential for 15 more, that's about $90,000, so it puts that, our costs maybe at about $70,000, so half of what we projected, but.
All right.
Need a motion, Madam Chair?
Yeah, I do need a motion.
I would move to approve the, John's recommendation of the Electric Construction Company bid at $160,182.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Arons?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
John, could you give us an update on Project Greenlight?
It was set up last night. It lit last night. I have pictures of it. It's a portion of pictures. It looks better sometimes than it does in person. We do have to make a few adjustments, because I wasn't here to kind of remind them where they all went, but it looked really good. I thought it looked, from the pictures I've seen, it looked very good.
I drove down, John, very good.
Is that lighting in up on the hill yet, to do that? I don't think they're to that point of putting that in.
I've been wondering if that was discussed early on, but I don't know where we're at.
Well, I know it was discussed. Let's follow up with that on our construction meeting.
All right, yeah.
I know it's in there, I was just wondering if it was up and going yet.
Yeah, I don't know if any part of that infrastructure's been put in yet, but.
Okay, all right.
I just have a question. Was anybody drive by the courthouse last night and saw that? It was very nice. Across the nation, green light has been put on courthouses across the country honoring our veterans.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
John Rombo's a veteran.
Yes.
I am.
What was your rank?
I got out of the reserves as a captain.
What's your rank, Commissioner Arons?
Lieutenant Colonel.
Oh. Who salutes who?
Obviously, I would be saluting him.
I'm saluting John.
Lynda, what was your rank?
That's beside me.
Oh, you ran the place.
Yeah. She was, Lynda was the real boss.
For sure, for sure.
All right, thanks, John.
Yeah.
All right, next we have our Rules of Procedure. Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning, Commissioners. Drew DeGrove from the State's Attorney's Office, bringing this item back. If you recall, it was at the end of last year that I brought this forward. I don't like suggesting changes mid-year, so we waited till the end of the year now. And this can be a work session or possible action. So just wanted to briefly kind of talk through some of these things. A lot of them were suggested the last time. I know we have two new commissioners on the board now from the last time this was in front of the Commission, so I thought it'd be appropriate to bring this again. By and large, most part, it hasn't changed. Couple updates to the calendar. One would be the open meetings training to be scheduled in February. We actually are going to have that for the end of the year here at the next night meeting. I thought it'd be a good, appropriate topic at a night meeting, but moving forward, we'd have it in February. This would allow, if there's any changes to the board, then it's at the beginning of the year, so those new Board of Commissioners would be able to have that training sooner than later. Also on there is the adoption of alcohol fees and licensing, to have that every year and have that actually within the calendar instead of by just the statutory requirement. Moving through this, again, a lot of it's regurgitating statutes, again, unchanged. So I'll keep kind of going down here to some of the changes. What I did do, based upon the current practice that we have for regular meetings, is outline that first and second meetings will be AM meetings. The third meeting on the fourth Tuesday will be at 6:30 PM. But I did want to highlight that unless there's a meeting conflict, then we would have a meeting in the morning. An all-public hearing shall be held at an evening meeting. So one of the concerns was a public hearing. If that fell during a joint meeting, when does that, what happens to it? Now, everybody's on notice. If you have a public hearing, we have a joint meeting, it's getting moved to the next month. This kind of just adds some uniformity to the process all around, so we don't have the confusion of when's the meeting happening, when's it not happening, what's going on here, is it in Sioux Falls, is it here? It just adds the uniformity of the process, and everybody's on notice. Kind of keep going down. Again, most of it's unchanged from the last time it was brought before you. We added the language at the last time this was discussed, except those of de minimis value, for no exchange of gifts. You know, you have Christmas, holidays, and things like that. People want to do gift exchanges, so we wanted to add that language. We added the language receipt of meals from county to four county commissioners during sanctioned membership events, so whatever that may be. If you have a sanctioned membership event and there's a meal, then you can have that allowed within the Rules of Procedure. One thing we did want to clarify, and this was actually Toby Brown from Planning &amp; Zoning, I discussed this, is just to clarify that if there's first readings, I know the last time he had a first reading, it was first reading, and he gave just an overview of what the issue was from a rezone. Just to clarify that there'd be no public comment during the first reading, because it would be going to a second reading. So just to clarify that within the Rules of Procedure. Now, this item, probably at my own doing, because I'm guilty of this, as I'll add something onto the agenda late, but just setting up a platform for when items can be added to the agenda, that there's a deadline of noon on Thursday, so there's no late additions, and people are scrambling on Friday, right before publication. It allows the Commission office time to make sure all the facts and vetting are properly input, and make sure that any forms that need to be uploaded are in there. So I know one question, because I brought this up actually at Department Head meeting, and one of the questions was, well, what if you don't have all the documents? Well, then you go to the next meeting. If you don't have it prepared, you just go to the next meeting. So it's just kind of a simple process, but it also just sets a hard deadline, so we don't have any of the late additions and scrambling to get documentation. Adding an item, I know this was an issue when we brought this up last year, but one Commissioner can add something to the agenda, just contact the Chair or the Commission Office, get it added prior to that deadline, we can make sure that it's on there. No, I think that's pretty much it, and I can answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have questions for Drew?
I do. Is this the procedure list, is this in force now?
No.
Okay, so there's nothing in force about rules?
Nothing.
Okay.
Other than public comment policy.
Okay. Because I know that what's in here, especially for agenda preparation, she's not been notified. The Chair has not been notified.
Yeah, so it just, it kind of, it creates uniformity, so there isn't confusion. I think one of the citizens said, if it's not broken, don't fix it. And while I agree to a certain extent, but it just creates uniformity to the process of adding things to the agenda and agenda items.
And I noticed in here, and I don't know who prepared this, but there's a lot of sentence structure that's not right, a lot of words that are missing, so I think this is good, but I would really like to really go through a deep dive and correct all that before we actually approve it as rules.
Yeah, and full disclosure, just like the last time, it mimics a lot of Pennington County, Minnion County. If it's not broken, don't fix it, you know, it's one of those that, we did make some adjustments to it. That pertains just to Lincoln County, but be happy to sit down and look through it and make any changes. Again, this could be a working session.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Does everybody want to get their, I mean, if there are corrections, grammatical and otherwise, I mean, that's one thing that we can get to you outside of a meeting, that's not a problem.
Yep. Individually, you could email me with any changes that you want to have.
So we want to put this on the next meeting, or?
It works. Sounds good.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks. All right, then we need to circle back to what was number six on our consent agenda. And that is on the Justice Center construction. Drew, I've got some other stuff. I mean, there's other stuff in my folder, is that old?
Um.
Or is it, I mean, we're just talking about the one?
We're just talking about the three items that were under consent agenda, item number six. I can kind of give a brief summation, I guess, of some of these. Again, so PCO 31, that is the West Street improvements. By and large, this was already approved by the Commission for not more than, if you recall, there was a proposed pricing. Actually, the bidding came in under what was previously approved, but Henry Carlson was just asking for a full scope change order approval instead of just the, from the south entrance to the north entrance. So it actually came in, I want to say originally it was passed or adopted by the Commission for around $361,000 to extend that asphalt improvement, and it came in at a bid of $295, I believe. So again, this, it was kind of formality of, it was already approved by the Commission, and so here we are now, just asking for final approval. PCO number 49, that was a county request on behalf of building and grounds, just additional controls for HVAC, for automation and maintenance. It would just really help them, and John can maybe speak to more of that one. As for PCO 53, add additional chairs to the courtrooms. This one kind of is an unfortunate situation, so what happened in the original bidding is, is, I can't remember if it was JLG or another company, had left out one of the courtrooms. So this isn't a change of scope, it was just that it was failed to be bid originally. And so what will happen from an expenditure standpoint is, if approved by the Commission, is the remainder of the FFNE, which would be fixtures, furniture, and equipment, would be paid for, and then the remainder would come out of Henry Carlson's contingency.
Drew, how much is UJS as a state entity paying Lincoln County for FFNE?
Oh, I'd have to go back and look. I want to say it's, I want to say around one, what was it again? Between security, desks, furniture, all that entails, I want to say it was 1.2 or something around there.
So just so the public is aware, then, we as a county have to purchase it, but we're getting quote-unquote reimbursed by UJS for the FFNE.
For a lot of it, for these, these specific items, for this changer, we wouldn't be, but there are other items we would be, yes.
The UJS stuff's already been ordered and approved, and you're right, though, that it is a reimbursement. And so, for instance, they're paying for everything in the clerk's office, in court services, in those offices where it's a UJS employee in the chair, but the courtrooms are by and large on the county to pay for all of that furniture. But as far as like judge chambers and that sort of thing, those furniture pieces are in that UJS component.
Okay, so the quote that we've received here for attorney tables, sheriff table for $4,300, that, since that is not technically used by the judge, or the clerks, or court services officers, we're responsible for paying that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions for Drew?
Yep.
All right, any public input on this agenda item?
Lynda Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. This is the reason I asked for this to be pulled from the agenda. The $45,178.65 for attorney tables, sheriff's tables for room 214, I think is excessive. I think it is, as a citizen and as a taxpayer, when I really want something, I make sure I have the money. And, you know, I'm sure you can find the money, but I think for the attorney's tables, $30,750.28 for the sheriff table, $4,301.37 for 875, the install is beyond me for $9,922. We have furniture over here. We have, I don't know, I think at some point, we have to say, wait. We have to say, is that building going to generate enough to pay us, the citizens of Lincoln County, back for something we never voted on? Thank you.
Thank you. Other public input?
Doug McKeon, Canton. I just want to talk about what Lynda talked about. $9,922 just to install them. How many of you people up there would buy a desk or a table for your house for $10,000 out of your own money? While people in Lincoln County can hardly pay their taxes anymore, how can you justify it? Thank you.
Scott Montgomery, Fairview. I just had a hard time swallowing this pill. I mean, for a table eight feet long, three feet deep, $7,687 apiece. Have we talked to anybody local that would build these tables for us? Are these tables even made in the United States of America, or are they imported? I mean, I think we're completely out of line here. That table serves the same purpose. You can go to Costco and buy that for less than 100 bucks. What do we need these raw tables at $7,600 bucks apiece for? And this is for one courtroom, correct? One courtroom. How many courtrooms we got out there, times $45,000? I don't know, I'm just befuddled that we'd spend this kind of money. Thank you.
Any other public input? All right, if not, Commissioners, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve change orders, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Arons?
No.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
No.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Next, we have our item, opportunity for public comment for items not on our agenda. If anyone wishes to address the county, now would be the time to do so.
Lynda Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. I actually have a very fun activity that I would like to invite you all to. We are having our first-ever Hand Count Expo, November 14th from 1 to 6, Saturday, November 15th from 9 to noon. People can come, they can learn different ways of hand counting, and they become certified by people who have been working with hand counting for a very long time. This isn't just South Dakota. This is national. People have been working together in the nation to come up with a good way to hand count that is, makes our elections free, fair, and transparent. President Trump is encouraging hand count elections. Help us to demonstrate how easy it is for the people to conduct a transparent and viable election. And I say this with all due respect, that- And I say this with all due respect, that there are, even our Secretary of State has to be subpoenaed to go back to GOAT to give us information regarding vendors. Vendors include, vendors that run our elections are running our elections, not the people. This is the way to make it transparent. I invite you all to come. You can look at the invitation on South Dakota canvassing. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment this morning?
Doug McKinney, Canton. At 2 o'clock this afternoon, there are two, a tour of the Justice Center. Do the taxpayers get to go along and see that? We should, because we're paying for it. And if it's a safety issue, we have hard hats for ourselves. Thank you.
Scott Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. I know it's talked about the ambulance service countywide. I think it's something the Commissioners ought to think about, too, is the fire service. Every, I think every department is struggling for members, and I don't know how we get people involved. It seems like people don't care anymore. I think it's something that, I don't know if this Commission can do anything about, but I think we need to make it aware that the fire service is struggling. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public input this morning? All right, if not, then we'll move on to Commissioner reports. Any Commissioners have items they'd like to report on?
Yes, Madam Chair. At 2 o'clock today, there is a tour of the new Justice Center. Mr. McKinney, I did find out, apparently there is a limit on the number of people that can go over there at one time, and there will not be a quorum of County Commissioners over there. Apparently, there's only going to be two of us. I did inquire about citizen tours as well for before it opens, you know, like within the next weeks or months, and it does sound like we're going to make some progress on that. Y'all are paying for it, you ought to be able to see it in a safe, orderly way. So, I did check in on that, okay? I don't know when that would happen, but, you know, if a bunch of Commissioners and judges can do a walkthrough, I'm sure a bunch of citizens can as well. So, we can figure all that out. Thank you.
I concur about that.
Any other public input this morning? Excuse me, go ahead with your report.
Number one, I want to thank everybody who came to Sioux Falls for last week's meeting in Sioux Falls that either came together publicly, or they watched live or watched the video. And then, number two, because my husband's always fond of saying we're not Mayberry anymore, I do want to say that because of the farmers, Treasury Secretary Scott Basset said that China agreed to purchase 12 million metric tons of crop during this season, which he indicated is between now and should be January. And then he added that China should purchase at least 25 million metric tons of soybeans each year during the next three years. And I know that's been a real concern for our farmers, so I just wanted to bring that forward. Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, ma'am. Other Commissioner reports?
Madam Chair, I picked this out of a paper. I don't know this, but there's going to be a hearing on November 21st to talk about a reaction on Highway 115 and 110, which is the Harrisburg area, to reduce the speed limit from 55 miles an hour down to, they have requested for 35, a zone there. So, you would go from 110 or the stoplight, you would go north about a mile. And as you know, that's where that school intersection is, and they have a stoplight there. And that gets to be kind of a real congested area in, when school is out and when school is going to go into session. So, anyway, they're going to have a hearing on that. I thought everybody could know that that might, you might end up with a 35 mile an hour speed spot in there. And if anybody should know about speed, I probably should, because I, like Commissioner Aaron's, I've never met a speed limit that I haven't violated, so. Anyway, not to my credit.
Speak for yourself.
Maybe you have too, Commissioner Aaron's, but you are an attorney and you can appeal better than I can. The other part is, we had a, we have, at the third Wednesday of every month, local governments get together, school districts, Commissions get together, and City Council people from Sioux Falls and from surrounding areas, and we talk about certain issues that affect local government. The last one we had was presented by Sheriff Milstead, and he was talking about the jail that was in his jail. But he also talked about the impact that the penitentiary would have, not any greater than what the penitentiary has today, but we talked a lot about recidivism, and we talked a lot about preventative things to try and help when they get out of prison, to help them back into society. And the biggest thing, of course, is housing, because housing is limited for not only affordability, but for persons that have had prison time. So, it was a rather interesting thing. But the encouraging thing for everybody should know is that the, it's turned. The worm has turned, and it is not punishment as much. It is punishment to serve, but it is now trying to, when they have served their time, to have programs available so that they don't come back into the system again, and that costs a ton of money. So, it's better to put the money on, in them, to try and help them find a job, find a place to live, and just keep themselves out of harm's way. So, that was a very interesting meeting, and it, and the jail situation, if you looked at the paper, is a very expensive situation. And I think that we are, whether, how long it will be before Lincoln County will have a need to have its own facility, remains to be seen. But as, right now, it's, I looked at all the counties that have invested huge sums of money in their incarceration facilities. So, anyway, it was, all those are meetings. They're on the third Wednesday. If anybody wanted to come, they're public. We talk about anything that affects county or local governments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Other reports? All right.
Madam Chair? I would ask Carrie to come up, to give us an update on the contributions and the...
Yeah, I just want to give a quick update on our food drive that we had for October. Yes, so, yeah, so in total, we had 317 separate items donated by the employees of Lincoln County, as well as the Commission and the public. In terms of sheer volume of boxes, we counted a little bit differently, so we can't go count for count, but the number of sheer volumes, we more than doubled what we did last year, so we're pretty excited about that. And I just want to thank Ashley and my team who did a lot of work coordinating, the Culture Committee, and then everybody else who donated to the cause. We're pretty excited about what we brought in for the month of October.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, if there are no other reports, Drew, sir, Paul, do you have a report?
Yeah.
Nope, come on up.
Yeah, thank you, Paul Anderson, you're Commissioner Admin Assistant. I just wanted to go over the comprehensive property tax meeting, the final one that was held in Pira on October 22nd, where they recommended their options to the full legislature. I'm not going to go individually. There's a very good write-up on Kelland.com that goes through each of them. That's very comprehensive. The main themes were extending freezes to people who are struggling to meet the burden of their property tax, so extending income limits and extending house valuation, increasing the ability for people to access information and apply online, looking at changes to discretionary funds and TIFs, making sure that those economic development tools are working for the people of the locations where they're being implemented. A very big part of it was looking into schools. They've looked at creating new funds to fund the schools, separating funds out, earmarking specific funds to offset the local efforts. There are going to be a group of about five proposals changed, is requesting to change how school districts handle their opt-outs and when those, and how those elections go to the people. So, look for changes to those opt-out elections to come. And one thing that I would like to point out from our end, based on increasing ease of information about where your property taxes go, what percentage goes to where, if you come to our equalization page and click on Property Information Portal, this is our Beacon website, this is our property tax center. What you can do is you can search your address here, and I won't do it here because it'll end up being someone's address, and we don't need to pull that up. But what it'll do is you can pull up your address, and it'll pull up a page, and it'll have your exact breakdown of where every dollar, it'll have your valuation of your house, and it'll have a table that includes where every dollar of your taxes goes to a school district, each individual bond the school has, the percentage that goes to the county and the percentage that goes to your municipality or your township. And it'll have it in a table, and it'll have a pie chart. It's very interesting information, if you'd ever like to look at it. This Beacon portal has a lot of really good information that property taxpayers can use to understand their property taxes, where it goes, and how it is used. So, that's it from the property taxes. The only other thing I'd like to mention is just to remind everyone that the courthouse is closed for Veterans Day, and the meeting that was originally, that was scheduled for that day will be held on Thursday, the 13th instead. Look for that agenda to be published Monday afternoon.
Thank you.
All right, could I follow up with a question for Carla? When you're talking about how your property taxes, where they go, is that still going to be on the yellow notification that a private property owner gets? Where the breakdowns of where your taxes are going?
That's on the tax notice that you received from the Treasurer's Office in January. The yellow notice, which is the assessment notice, is strictly looking at your property value.
Okay, so the other, the other pieces were taken out now? It used to have a listing at the bottom of...
That's on your tax notice that you get from the Treasurer's Office.
Okay. Thank you.
In January, yes.
Thank you. Drew, do we need an executive session?
Yes, under SCCL 125, 2 subsection 3.
All right, can I get a motion to that effect?
Otten?
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Alicia Lee Carlewell?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Alicia Lee Carlewell?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Schmidt?
Second.
Aaron's? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the others, same signs.
Aye, aye.
Here we are, we're adjourned.
And I am aye.